Okay, we'll be calling to order the city council meeting for Monday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dean?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson? Oh, she's not here, sorry. Stanton?
Here.
And Truster?
Here.
Sorry, and Becken.
Here. Let the record show that council person Peterson is excused with prior notice. So we have a quorum. Moving on this evening, our next agenda item is approval of minutes. The first minute meeting minutes we need to approve is for our last regular council meeting of January eleventh. Do I have a motion to approve a minute?
Mayor? This is Garnett. So moved, moved to approve the minutes of January eleventh.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Louis, seconded by Leo to approve the minutes.
Stan.
Stan.
Lauren, I'm sorry. That's all right. To approve the minutes as presented, any comments, questions, or corrections? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on a motion?
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Truster?
I'm sorry, yes.
And Becken.
Yes. A motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll Cheryl entertain a motion on the minutes for a special, special city council meeting of January fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Have a motion, please.
Mayor? Motion to approve the special city council meeting minutes from January fourteenth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Dean, seconded by Truster to approve the minutes of their January, January fourteenth special meeting. Any questions? Comments, or corrections? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
And Becken.
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Next, we will need a motion to approve the special city council closed minutes, which council had the opportunity to review prior to the meeting for a close session meeting held on, in conjunction with our January fourteenth meeting. So the closed session was held during the meeting on January fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
I move we approve the minutes of the closed meeting of January fourteenth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Truster, seconded by
Dean.
Dean to approve the special council, or the, the closed council minutes, the closed meeting minutes in January fourteenth. Any questions, comments, corrections? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on a motion?
Yep, sorry, it sounded like a tie there. Was that Louis or Dean on the second?
That is Dean.
Dean.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken.
Yes, a motion passes unanimously. Lastly, we entertain a motion to approve the city council minutes of a special meeting held on January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Mayor, so moved. This Garnett.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Louis, seconded by Stanton to approve the minutes of a special council meeting held on January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Are there any questions? Comments, or corrections? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on a motion?
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken.
Yes. That motion passes unanimously. There are no comments by the mayor this evening. Moving on to city manager's comments, Karen?
Yeah, I have a few. One, Cody Hardy, new DPW employee started today. Last week, or the week before, we had a hundred and fifty potential tripping hazards ground down on our sidewalk. So the machine finally was up and running. It was a great machine, didn't, wasn't as noisy or as dusty as the prior one. And so anyway, a hundred and fifty sidewalks were done. Last week, planning director Cindy and Osman and I met with, excuse me, the Dune Ridge folks. The wall was a subject of that meeting. I thought we had made some good progress on that, but the agreements we had are now in question. So I think we took one step forward and another step backward. One thing, we met again with them this morning. They did ask to be able to present their site plan to the city council. Not, not as a decision item, just as a discussion item. And this is the site plan very similar to what they came to the zoning board of appeals a couple of years ago. A little bit of changes, but anyway, they talked about wanting to show the plan to the council, and that might be sometime in March. Lastly, this, this is my last meeting with you as your manager. And I wanted to tell you all that I've been honored to work for you. I've grown to like and appreciate every one of you. I think you're working together very well. And the ones that I've only met as a postage stamp size head, I hope we can change that eventually. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. And I'll be here for your workshop, but as an, as an observer.
All right, thank you, Karen, for comments. We have anything to add to the agenda this evening?
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure where it should go in the agenda, but don't we typically have a space for council comments? I do have some constituent comments that I need to feed into the council.
Are they related to any agenda items, Scott?
Uh, no, they are not.
Okay. How about a council comments at the end?
It's fine.
Typically, we can field comments by the council. It's not unusual for those types of comments to then carry over to workshop items, future workshop items, if the council so determines, okay?
That's fine. I didn't even see page two, so my apologies.
All righty. Any other comments, or we're going to agenda items? Karen, are we set with the agenda from your perspective?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our agenda will stand as presented. Next order of business is our guest speakers this evening. First on the agenda, Lieutenant Brett Enfield from Allegan County Sheriff's Department. Brett, are you with us this evening?
Yeah, yep. I really don't have anything. I just didn't know if anybody had any questions or anything that need to be answered.
Yeah, Brett, this is Garnett.
Hey, how's it going?
Hey, good. Hey, I'm just curious, as I was reading through, you know, and I appreciate your, the regular reports. As I was reading through, it got me to wondering, with, with COVID and, you know, the shutdowns, the way that we've had, have you noticed an increase in any incidents, any particular incidents over the last year as compared to normal?
Um, not specifically. I know that, you know, we've had some, you know, the health and safety, you know, ones in the summertime that, you know, obviously had a rise to complaint, different complaints and so forth that, you know, we had to respond to. And then, you know, there are actually, there has been an uptick in some of the rental houses and stuff that we've had some conflicts with some of the neighbors, you know, a little bit, little bit more neighbor disputes and conflicts, I think, just because of the extended rental periods where, you know, usually the, the time, you know, elapses of the summertime and maybe neighbors have become a little bit more annoyed and so forth with, you know, some of the rental houses and so forth. But nothing that's, you know, too extreme or anything else that we're not dealing with in any, any other part of the county. But other than that, not really. I mean, with, you know, the downturn of, you know, some of the alcohol complaints and stuff that we have, you know, without the bars and restaurants being fully, you know, capacity and so forth during the nights and stuff. I mean, obviously that, you know, other complaints have taken place for, for those, you know, those guys to stay busy and so forth, so.
Okay, yeah, I think maybe it was just that I seemed to notice it more this time. I noticed the domestic assault ones.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are, there are some domestic assault, you know, complaints with, you know, people being in the, in the houses and stuff, you know, there's a, you know, obviously, you know, I think countywide, we actually probably have seen a, you know, a decrease probably in some of the, uh, reporting of some of the other abuse, abuses and stuff, just because, you know, people aren't out and having people report it for them and stuff. But the other, the domestic assaults are, you know, up and, you know, suicidal calls are definitely up. We had one that, you know, Deputy Flockster started to respond to the other day that helped out with a, our drone and stuff, but he was called off prior to that. You may see that on the call log. That, that turned out, you know, in our favor where we actually able to negotiate the person out and stuff. But we're, we're seeing a lot of influx in, you know, those type of calls, just because of, you know, people being cooped up or just, you know, the, you know, what the pandemic has on people's businesses and so forth that causes conflicts or, you know, lack of work and so forth, so.
Okay.
But that's, that's a systemic countywide problem, too. You know, it's not just in the, you know, this area specifically either, so.
Sure. Thanks.
Right, thanks Garnett. Any other council person have a question for Lieutenant this evening?
Brett, I just had one question. This is Lauren Stanton. I saw one of your call logs said fraud. Is that anything that you can discuss? That was just interesting.
I specifically don't recall what, what it is. I can, I can look more into it and give you a call and try to figure it out. I, like I said, I, I didn't review those that closely to see what, what they were and stuff. I mean, there, there are a lot of frauds that are, you know, go on and so forth. So it could be something that's very minor. You know, it's just labeled that way as our dispatch, or, you know, it's going to be something that's, you know, an abasement type thing and so forth that we've had, you know, with some employees and stuff in the past.
Any fake bills going on or something like that?
No, we haven't seen any of the fake bills. Knock on wood. No, we have not seen any of that. So, you know, it could be, you know, bad check almost, you know, it could be a fraud, you know, that type of stuff. I can look into it and get, get with you on exactly what, kind of what it was. But off the top of my head, I can't think of it, so.
All right, thanks, Lauren. Any other council person with a question or comment?
Real quick, real quick, Mayor, yeah, Lieutenant Enfield. I also noticed, Garn, Garn asked my exact question. I noticed that we had three domestic assaults, so maybe that's just something that we need to keep an eye on. And I don't know if there are additional community resources, you know, that we need to think about, but seems like that is something we need to keep an eye on.
Yeah, it does happen, you know, it's, you know, and I think it's at times underreported and, and so forth, you know, sometimes, you know, people are in need of, you know, somebody to talk to and stuff and able to, you know, call and, you know, ask for help, you know, so. You know, sometimes it looks good, some people's relationships look good from the outside, but they're actually not, not going along very good, you know, so. You know, just, I would suggest everybody to listen to those warning signs and stuff and, you know, just definitely talk to, talk to people and so forth, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's a topic that we have been visited by this summer personally, with a lot of people, so, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if, if somebody's talking to you, reaching out that normally doesn't, or, or saying things that, you know, probably, you know, kind of make you wonder, I would definitely, you know, try to pry into it and, you know, talk to them a little bit more and stuff, because like I said, it's sometimes it's underreported and stuff, so.
Keep an eye out, keep an eye on, on your neighbors and, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Right. Thanks, Holly. Any other council person? Comment, question for, damn it? If none, Brett will let you go. We appreciate your comments and your advice. And keep up the good work. You and your, you and your folks are doing a good job for us. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Uh, next guest speaker this evening who was asked to be moved up in the agenda due to a conflict, the timing conflict, will be Dan Fox, who's going to give us the most recent report on the Sodik Township Fire Department. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for moving me up in the, on the agenda. It was a big help. This report concerns the fire board meeting of January eighteenth. And it's a list of highlights, not, certainly not everything we covered in the meeting. First one, Dan Van Vaid Heisen of the Secret Crandall Accounting Firm reviewed the district's year end, which is thirtieth of June, twenty twenty, financial numbers. He gave a very favorable report, complimenting the district, and in particular, complimenting Peter Stanislawski's performance as treasurer, is really an excellent audit report, as there have been for several years in the district. District finances were reviewed and approved by the board. We looked at a lot of the statistics for twenty twenty. Michigan statewide fire statistics included notation of a hundred and twenty-three fatalities, an increase of twenty-one percent across the state. By two, to get inside the numbers, by a two-to-one majority, men were more likely to die in a fire than women. Smoking was the number one cause. Living rooms, the most frequent starting point. And seventy-one percent of the fires statewide occurred in homes below the Michigan median valuation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the district's specifically twenty twenty incidents, the total number stood at eight hundred and sixty-two, down eleven percent. I'm sorry, down a hundred and fifteen or twelve percent. City of Sagittuck incidents are twenty-six percent of that total, which is slightly above the city's twenty-four point four percent share of the district's funding. Chief Janik personally responded to a hundred and sixty-three total calls, including seventy-nine outside normal, excuse me, normal work hours. Average Sagittuck Township Fire Department response time for the year was five point four six minutes. For the AMR people, the ambulance people contractor, the response time was twelve, twelve minutes, fifteen seconds on average. Both of these are roughly comparable year to year. Motor vehicle accident responses in twenty twenty were down dramatically, down by forty, forty-four responses, roughly forty-one percent, forty-one percent decline. Many of those are calls from the, related to the interstate and obviously lower lower use of private travel or whatever counts for some of that. Special events within the fire district, which the fire fire department is asked to, from time to time, to participate in, has been, are down dramatically, some of that COVID-related, and some of it due to the, the board over the past two years. Helping to manage that number down. It's, it was a bit out of, out of sync, and those are expensive when you're talking about people and equipment. Since there was a question from the council last, Garnett asked last time. Marine responses in twenty twenty numbered nineteen, including eight quote boats in district, boat in distress calls and three water rescue responses. And finally, the board formed a subcommittee to review Chief Janik's compensation, as we had, as the board had originally agreed to do. Roughly timed for July, and that just simply got pushed back, so that is underway. That concludes the report. There are a good deal more statistics that are available if you're interested, or, and I'd be happy to get them for you if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Okay, council, have any questions for committee member, Mr. Fox? Okeydoke, thanks, Dan, for your, for your report. Appreciate it. Moving on, this is, this, uh, let's see here. This portion of the meeting is, council invites the public to address council members. You're limited to three minutes for your comments. Please limit your comments to agenda items only at this portion of the meeting. You'll have another opportunity to address the council on any item later in the meeting. If you wish to address a council, please identify yourself by name and your community of residence. If you are participating in the meeting via Zoom, please unmute your mic in the Zoom interface and speak your name to be recognized. Or if you're joining us by phone, please press star six to participate. So anybody wish to address the council this evening, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is Brian Heiss. Can you hear me?
Ryan Heiss, yes, we can hear you. Good evening, welcome.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and to the council and staff. Happy to, to tell you that I'm joining this meeting from the city of Sagittuck. The entire family has arrived safely, and all is well. And I'll be reaching out to staff and council and doing some pop-ins to, to meet with staff and just real pleased to be here.
All right, Ryan, thanks for joining the meeting. I can guess you probably haven't hooked up with Comcast yet, so. Good luck on that one.
Thank you.
So do we have anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening? If none, we'll move on to next agenda item, request for payments. Do I have a motion to approve the accounts payable, please?
Yes, Mayor, this is Garn.
Garnett.
Moved to approve accounts payable in the amount of five hundred and two thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Louis, seconded by Truster to approve the accounts payable this evening. Well, I gotta get down to the bottom, yeah. Where is it? Bottom, how much is that, five hundred and?
Five hundred and two thousand eight hundred and ninety.
Yeah, got it.
Ninety-six.
Got a couple high ticket items in there. These questions, I know city treasurer is joining us this evening. Peter, you want to touch base in a couple of these? It's kind of an unusual one, like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. I think that's probably just a re-investment of a CD.
It's a new, it's just a new CD to write a check for a bank out of Grand Rapids. So that's the one that somebody had asked me earlier today, so it's a new CD.
Okay, all right. Plus, there's some considerable money for tax suits that the city collects, associated with other.
Right. And those probably, that two, and then they're sharing the annual, the monthly sheriff's contracts on there. And that, between the tax payments and that CD, that probably makes up ninety percent of them.
Okay, all right. Thanks for clarifying.
And there's one there for Mutton that somebody else had asked me about. That is, that's for all the dog bags are in the parks. And somebody had, in July, usually, I think it's like a hundred dollars, that last for a year. Well, we went through that many since the first of July till now. So either we have a lot more people walking their dogs, or my comment was, we have our baggie fees back in town where people aren't, just aren't taking one, they're taking a whole package of fifty or on a pack that we've, our part employees have seen people in town do that. And it hasn't gone around, we haven't caught anybody lately, but it's, has happened a few years ago. And you can tell the order history, usually twelve cases, case a month will make it. And now we're using twice as many. But Scott believes that we have a lot more people in the parks walking their dogs.
Yeah.
Well, we're certainly a, a dog-friendly community.
Yeah.
I'm glad they're, I'm glad they're using them.
Yes, yes, so. Okay.
I don't know if any other, any other particular bills anybody has a question on?
Council, anything else for Peter? All right, thanks for showing up and answering, clarifying some of these larger expenses, Peter.
Not a problem.
So if there's no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Louis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on this evening, there is no introduction of ordinances. We have no public hearings planned this evening and no unfinished business. Now move on to the new business portion of our meeting. First item of business, Sagittuck Douglas Garden Club Community Pride Event application. Karen?
I'm going to defer to Erin, please.
Uh, yes, this is a, an event that's done every year. And I was actually just scrambling for the picture on my hard drive of it to pull up for you. Every year they do this in the SCA parking lot. They invite the kids to come and learn about community pride and taking care of the community. Basically, what they do is they shut down part of the SCA parking lot. Scott and the DPW bring over, can't remember, forty-two pots, and the kids learn about planting them and then plant them together. And so it's just an event permit asking for permission to do that. And then they also, which I think was part of this, sorry, I'm just glancing really quickly. We also have a line item in the budget every year to give them fifteen hundred dollars, or this year it's fifteen hundred dollars, to cover the cost of the plants that go in the planters that go all around town. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to say I participated in this for three years, and this is a great event. In having those kids involved in, in community service and so on, and, and it's, it's a lot of fun for the mayor to give them the, their orientation at the beginning of that project, and it ends up making the town look great. So I'm pleased to move to approve the Sagittuck Douglas Garden Club special event application to hold the community pride event and close a portion of the parking lot next to the SCA on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, from eight thirty to eleven AM. Contingent on the applicant signing the letter of understanding dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
That was from Holly?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Truster, seconded by Leo to approve the special event application from the Sagittuck Douglas Garden Club. Any other comments? Okeydoke. And I want to thank you for putting me on the spot on that one, okay?
You'll love it.
Okay, if there's no further comments or questions with the clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Truster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton? Yes.
Becken.
Yes. Okay. Item thirteen B, the Sodik Center for the Arts Mountain Fest banner approval. Fairly self-explanatory. Karen, do you have any more comments, Karen, or Cindy? It looks like maybe whoever from our staff wants to pick this one up.
I'll let Cindy go. She's more familiar with it than I am.
All righty.
She's muted.
This is one of our annual events that we approve. There is not really an event with it, but it entails a banner under the pallet sign. I can approve the yard signs administratively, but city council can approve the banner. They're allowed three banners per year for fourteen days each. They have They're allowed three banners per year for fourteen days each. They have requested for the full month of March. So that would be two of their, two of their permits that they get for the year. It's for the. Mountain Fest Film Fest. And they will be selling tickets soon. And I hope everybody who gets a chance to participate can. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Hey, do I have a motion, please?
Mayor?
Yes.
To approve the request to install a banner within the public right of way as indicated on the attached right-of-way sign permit application.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Dean seconded by.
Leo.
Leo. To approve these banner from the SCA. Cindy, when you say they have three. Opportunities to place banners via, in the, by city approval, council approval, you're, you're referring to the SCA.
I'm referring to the SCA. If you look at number five on the. Descriptions, the banners shall be placed for no more than three fourteen-day periods between January one and December fourteen. So this application will use up two of those allowed installations.
Okay. All right, thanks for that, that clarification. So any other questions from council or comments on this motion? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. New business item thirteen D. Resolution to adopt poverty exact exemption income guidelines and asset test. Can you kind of fill us in on this one, Karen?
Yes, every year the Fed. Produces a chart of what the poverty levels are for. Singles families and. The city, all cities, all, all taxing jurisdictions are required to adopt either the, the federal income guidelines. Or to create their own, which are, which cannot be lower than the, the federal guidelines. And. In the past, Sagittuck has always adopted what the federal government says are the income levels. Persons who are at or under the federal income levels are, can apply to the Board of Review for an exemption from property tax. One thing that's new this year is that if they're. On a fixed income, for example, social security or social security disability or something like that, they don't have to reapply every year. They can, it can be good for three years. So pretty much. Only the Board of Review can, can approve or deny a federal exemption. That's a little bit different. It used to be the supervisor could. In a township, that is. So anyway, what this resolution does is say, say we're adopting the federal rules as they're published and. The law is we have to do it between now and the Board of Review, which is in March, so there, there's actually plenty of time. So if you have any questions, I can attempt to, I'm not an assessor, but. I can attempt.
So Mayor, this is Garn. Motion to approve resolution number two one zero one two five dash C, a resolution to adopt poverty exemption income guidelines and asset test.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Louis seconded by, was that Lauren?
Stanton, yep.
Okay, thank you. To approve. The resolution, motion on the resolution as presented. Any further questions or comments from council?
So just a, a question for Peter, because having been on the Board of Review, we don't, we don't have many, Peter, that, that this applies to, if I recall in my time on the Board of Review.
Since I've been here, we, the Board of Reviews approved one poverty exemption or otherwise, yeah, we're. There's none that we've ever even, even people that have applied, because most, most people don't even qualify.
Okay.
Um.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm happy to see this. I mean, this might come in handy for some folks this year with pandemic. And I, I wonder, do we need to provide any notice? Of this change? Should it be on the website or should we make people aware or I don't know how that works?
That is part of the resolution that we will have it on our website.
Okay, so there will be notice to the public?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if no further questions, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next. Item on our agenda this evening. Extending, extending the interim city manager contract for one week. I'll kind of take the lead on this one. As I was contacted by. Our future city manager, Ryan. Heiss. Asking if the council would consider. Pending Karen Doyle Holman's availability. To make her available for. For any questions, assistance. Or resource, or a resource that he thinks he would like to avail himself. To, for the first year of his. Employment with the city. There were some discussions between. Ryan and Karen and myself. And so we have come to. An agreement. And we're offering this one week extension for review and of approval. By city council this evening. So do I have a motion to approve this amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve. The. Second Amendment. Employment Agreement between the city of Sagittuck and Karen Doyle Holman.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion by Leo seconded. By Dean to approve the, the amendment to the employment contract for Karen Doyle Holman as presented. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
This Garn. Karen, thanks, thanks for doing this. I know it's gonna be a huge help to Ryan to have you available. Yeah, so I appreciate your willingness, willingness to stick around with us a little bit longer.
Thank you.
All right, and to echo Garnett's comments, like to, I only thank her for, thank Karen for making herself available for the next week. But also thanking her for her, her service as our interim city manager for the past several months. It's been, what, three months?
September fifteenth was my first day.
All right, two and a half months, okay.
And counting.
Thank you. Any other comment by counsel?
I add my compliments for a great job, Karen. You really kept us together.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just wanna add comments to that, that it's just been a pleasure working with you, Karen, getting to know you and your level of professionalism. I've learned a lot from you and I'm sad to see you go, but I'm so happy that you're going to help transition for the weekend. That will have you for another week. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You better just add any to that. It was a real team effort. Led by Karen and with the rest of our staff to, you know, carry on city functions through this period without a official. You know, without a full-time city manager on board, so thanks to all. No further questions or comments? Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Leo? Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on, next. Item twenty twenty-one Boat Slip Management Agreement with Sergeant Marine. This is a renewal of an annual agreement with. With Sergeant Marine regarding city docks. In the Griffith Street, one half of the Griffith Street, street end and along, no, Wicks Park, I mean, not Wicks Park, but Coughlin Park. But Karen, you want to? Lead the charge on this one, or do you want Aaron to pick it up?
Aaron put this together, so.
All right.
I'll defer to her.
All righty, thank you. Aaron?
I'm not sure how much more I have to say about this other than what you've already covered. The annual amount is here and obviously in two thousand nineteen, it's reflected that because the water was so high. The docks were not usable and so those fees were down. Twenty twenty, it was better. And. The only changes to the contract really are the dates. And everything else has been approved by the. City Attorney. And I'm happy to answer any questions or try.
So Erin, do these all have to be transient slips? These are all for people visiting, right?
Yes.
And.
Go ahead, sorry, Lauren.
Um, do we decide on that rate or does Sergeant Marine decide on that rate? Because I went to Sergeant's website just to see how much a daily or nightly rental rate, but I had to go through a few more things. I just didn't know if the city decided on that rate or if Sergeant decides that rate.
You know, I would have to look back through the detail of the contract, to be honest. I don't remember that detail off the top of my head. Is Peter still here?
Yeah, he is.
If you look through the agreement, Sergeant gets to set the rate and it cannot be lower than the rates charged at others' marinas in the, in our waterway here.
And they can't use those slips for seasonal rentals, correct? Those are mainly for the city to be able to have transient slips for people visiting.
No. I don't, I, I thought that these were the slips that people could actually rent and, and stay in for a period of time. Not the, not the open docks that are off of Coughlin Park where anyone can pull up to those. These you have to actually reserve and pay. And I think that you also get parking with it, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. So my point, my point was that it's, they're listed as transient slips. You know, for overnight stays and people that are visiting, but I'm just asking if Sergeant is allowed to make those seasonal.
I believe the answer to that is no.
Okay.
They cannot use them as seasonal slips.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Now, before we get to the motion. There was. During our. Discussions regarding. Street end license agreements. And some of the agreements we have on city property with adjoining prop, you know, with adjoining property owners, discussion about. Utilizing maybe some of this location for. Such thing as. Kayak, launch. Those types of things. I know Scott and. Chris Peterson were kind of interested in, in. Not maybe this specific site, but this site along with any other available properties. That the city may have. I don't think we're up against any hard timeframe to approve this. Other than I think there's more of a housekeeping item following up on the motion to approve our prior lease agreements. So I guess I'm looking at council saying, is, you want to explore this a little bit further in some workshop discussion? Keep in mind, the way I understand this is that. We're talking about the foot of Griffith Street as it dead ends into the river. We have an agreement with. Sergeant Marine that they get the west half of that street end as adjoining property owner. To, to use as they see fit. And all they do is pay us the going license fee. The remaining property to the east, which is two dock slips, two docking areas. Along with two other areas, I believe that are part of Coughlin Park right away. Are areas that are, we have this agreement with and we recoup probably fifty percent of the short-term or interim transient dock rental. But maybe one or two of those slips could be utilized. For more access by the public. So I, I guess we might as well open that up a little bit. Anyone who wants to comment about that?
Mayor, yeah, I think I, I brought up the issue of, you know, a lot of people now come to town not only with bicycles, but they'll bring paddle boards, various inflatable. Rafts, kayaks, canoes. I went down there and Aaron, if you can call up that, that kind of rough map.
Want me to zoom in at all?
Yeah, that's fine, what you've done. There's actually. Is that the, that's the gazebo that, that kind of trapezoid, right?
Correct.
Yeah. It's between the, the city's park boundary, which is, it's not rendered on this map. But there's easily well over fifty feet past the dinghy dock. Where I think we have opportunities as a city, which I'm, I'm assuming we control. We could easily put in an ADA compliant. Launch for, for smaller craft like the kayaks, like, like the paddle boards, things of that nature. We can even probably, we probably have tons of space to even put in racks if residents wanted to rack and lock up paddle boards, kayaks, you name it. We could probably do that if we, you know, kept it sort of controlled and that, you know, it was kept nice. But I think the, the area already lends itself, given that I think that's concrete there. It would lend itself to people. You know, that would need to access it in a wheelchair, for example. There's a number of ADA compliant examples of these launching facilities. In fact, I think that's exactly what Douglas did over in Waves Bayou in terms of the, the structure that they use so people could launch. So I think there's an opportunity there, an opportunity that wouldn't even take away from the rental income that the city derives from those four slips. I'm happy to break the conversation into two pieces. Maybe it's a different workshop, maybe this is simple the way it is, or we could look at it more holistically. I'm open to either idea.
Just for clarification, Scott, are you saying? We don't need. We may not need the space of the transient slips, that there may be enough. Space along the existing seawall. To, to address this potential use?
Exactly. I, I didn't take a tape measure, I just paced it off, but it appears that from the edge. Of a dock, you know, the, the ingress to the dinghy dock. Heading, heading to your left, there's quite a bit of room where I'd probably incorporate some other launching facilities for, for smaller craft. You could probably. Consider even doing another dinghy dock, but you know, one area that's underserved, I do think are people that are using these. Kayaks, paddle boards, you know, I think we want to make sure that they can safely access the water and then that we've also got something that's ADA compliant. So it's something to think of.
So Mayor, this is, this is Garn. Do you think it would be better served to really do a deep dive on this at our next workshop? To really look at the big picture of all of this? Boat slips and then any expansion like Scott is suggestion, suggesting right there down at Coughlin Park.
Well, that's, that's possible. I don't know if we're gonna have enough time to get the necessary information together by the next workshop. I guess what, one reason I brought it up is I don't think we're against a hard timeframe. To do this in the next thirty days. I mean, we could probably even wait till March or April to approve this, this agreement. At least from my perspective, because I think is not only considering using this area, I think we'd also want to look at what type of. Docking. Or launch type of apparatus is available that may fit there. I mean, I know there are certain types of. I mean, I know there are certain types of, there are things that you can purchase, uh, that make it easier to, to launch and, uh, load into kayaks. And, uh, again, he was talking about it, maybe an area that could be, uh, uh, like a bu, instead of a bike rack, it would be a, you know, a, uh, paddleboard rack or kayak locked rack. So, yeah, I, I, I think it, uh, I think we can alert, you know, I don't think we're, like I said, we're not any pressure to approve this thing right now. Uh, at least leave our, our options open for another month or two.
I, I'd also like to, um, to get Ryan involved in this conversation.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. I think he may have some ideas from his past community, uh, in, in terms of how we can do this, you know, in a safe, uh, effective way.
Pete, Scott, Pete?
Mr. Mark, Mr. Mayor. I believe why this has always been approved earlier in the years because Sergeant starts to take reservations for people to have a place to put their boats or they're coming on vacation or Fourth of July. And I don't know if you wait to April, they're gonna, you know, they probably need to get this either EA or NA because their, their phones are gonna start ringing for people wanting reservations because they're booking vacations or other options. So just, just food for thought. I think that's why it gets approved so early in the year.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
That's understandable. Yeah.
Mark, you know, I, I think that's correct and, and I also think that Scott's observation that there's a lot of room, uh, to the east of, of those slips, um, that, uh, we probably don't need to, uh, hold up action on, on these slips. Um, you know, Sagatuck does not have a lot of transient dockage. And so I wouldn't want to put in something that even eliminated the, you know, the, the slips that we do offer here. Cause that's a way of bringing, um, uh, people into town and bolsters our economy.
Okay. Any other council comment? Again, it's.
Are there any other city-owned docks that are transient slips? Besides these ones through Sergeant? Are there only four transient slips that are city-owned? The city doesn't own any other transient slips, right?
No.
Correct, correct. Now that does not preclude, uh, the existing, uh, license holders on the end of the street end docks to utilize those docks on occasion as transient slips. However, we don't participate in any of the revenues from that. You know, it just goes with our, our license agreement fees. So I guess the answer is no, we don't have any other transient slips. The agreement specifically with Sergeant specifically states that these four slips, uh, are to be used solely for transients.
All right, Mayor, this is Garn.
Sure.
Motion to approve the 2021 boat slip management agreement between the City of Sagatuck and Sergeant Marina for the management of boat slips number one through number four located at the Griffith Street end and a portion of Coughlin Park as presented.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by, uh, Lewis, seconded by Truster to, uh, approve the motion as presented. Do we have any further comment?
Uh, this is just Garn, just to kind of follow up on Scott's request and that we visit this then maybe in March, um, that whole area down there and see what we can add for our kayakers and paddleboarders. I think that would be a really nice addition for the city to do. Cindy's waving her hand.
Yeah.
Cindy.
Cindy is?
Yeah.
Does that mean you want to say something, Cindy?
She's muted.
I, I did want to say something that when we did our five-year parks and recreation plan, there was a specific plan just to do just that in that five-year plan. I remember seeing it. I did not, I was not part of the discussion, but I think the work has probably already been done and we just need to take it out of the package and take a look at it.
I think you're right.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that comment. Uh, I believe what we just need to do, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor. I just had, had one little question. Um, do, um, Peter, do you get reports, um, from, um, Sergeant? Do we know, uh, are, are we sure that these are used for transient? And I didn't see any fees attached, actual fees. So I was just wondering if that's a bit of an accounting that comes to you?
Um, yes.
Keep an eye on that?
Yeah, we get, they cut a check, usually, I think this one, usually it's November, I get a check. Then we get a detail of every day, weekend, the actual revenues of what, what boats were there, what days you're there, what they collected. And there's a spreadsheet chart that I've, I've gotten with the check. And see, this year itself has doubled. So, but you can see the revenues have been falling over there. You know, their highest 7,400 is the low was 2,100. So, but it's been, it's been, otherwise it's been a steady range of about $5,500 a year.
Thank you.
Okay, if we, uh, have no further, uh, comments, uh, with the clerk, please call the, uh, roll on the motion.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. And just as a quick follow-up, this is just these, another item we need to add to our, uh, priority list and our strategizing sessions that will be, uh, eventually holding in the next, uh, few weeks, few months with, uh, our new city manager. Moving on, uh, item F, our school tax collection agreement. This is something that Peter's going to, okay, has Aaron here?
Yes, go ahead, Peter.
Um, this is just basically housekeeping. It gets approved every year in January, February. It's an agreement that we will place the Ottawa County, the ISD, um, full millage on the summer bills for collections. And then the ISD in turns has a contract with Sagatuck Public Schools that we place half their millage on the winter, the summer bill, the other half on the winter. And the school is one that we actually bill the $2.75 parcel, but that's a separate agreement the ISD has with Sagatuck Public Schools. And it's where it is because most other units like Allegan Town, if you had property in South, in Sagatuck Township, it's in the Fenville School District, it's at Allegan ISD and that's only placed in the winter time. So it's a law that's been around since the early eighties, but we have to agree to, for the summertime collection for the ISD. So I don't know if anybody had, that's really just, it's a housekeeping thing that we do every year that gets approved in January.
So do, uh, have a motion, uh, on this item, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and enter into an agreement between the City of Sagatuck, Sagatuck Public Schools and the Ottawa Area ISD for collection of the 2021 summer tax levels of a rate of $2.75 per.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Stanton, seconded by Lewis to approve the motion. Are there any other questions for, uh, Peter regarding this? Like Peter says, we've been doing this, uh, for years and years and years. It's just kind of a, uh, standard operating procedure. And so if there's no further comments, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry, I missed, who was the second on that?
Garn.
Lewis.
Uh, Stanton?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda is our second opportunity for the public to address council.
Oh, wait, we have, oh, we have one other thing. Oops.
No, I don't believe we have a consent agenda this evening.
I'm, I'm sorry, there, Mr. Mayor, there were multiple versions of the agenda. It's my fault. 13G is up on the screen.
Who's election?
What is that? Sorry. 13G.
Which, um, this is another housekeeping thing. It was a law that went into effect a couple of years ago. It used to be that the schools managed their own elections. They found that they had a lot of problems with consistency and, and so on and so forth. So a handful of years ago, they switched it to allow the county, uh, clerk to coordinate elections on behalf of the school district. And so every four years, we, we just have to agree to this again.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for missing that. Uh.
No, it's, it's my fault. It was dropped on the agenda and, and that was my fault that happened. Sorry about that.
Do I have a motion on the issue, please?
Yeah, Mayor, mo- motion to authorize the city clerk to sign and enter into the attached agreement between the City of Sagatuck and the Ottawa Area Intermediate School District Election Court.
Documents were in it.
Regarding the conduct of school district elections.
Why? Sorry, that way.
Have a second.
Second.
That's seconded by, uh, Leo.
Yeah.
We have a, a motion by Dean, seconded by Leo, uh, to approve the, uh, the motion as presented. Any other further questions, discussion? If none, with the clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next, uh, agenda item is the, uh, second opportunity for the public to address the council this evening. You can address council on any issue that you wish. Please identify yourself with your name and community of residence. And your comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone who wishes to address the council this evening, please? See anyone out there? Aaron?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, item, uh, 16 communications, we have a letter from, uh, Ruth and Mike Johnson regarding, Pike Street or Park Street, uh, safety, for council review and consideration. Uh, moving on this evening, we'll go to our, uh, board and commission reports. I'll start with, uh, do we have a planning commission report this evening? I think Cindy was maybe going to give that on behalf of, uh, Chris Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, council met, uh, or the planning commission met on, uh, January 21, where they heard an application from Retro Boats to place the moved fish shanty onto their parcel. They also proposed to extend the city sidewalk in front of that parcel. And I, that was part of the approval to do that. There will be needing to involve the city engineer to make sure that it complies with our sidewalk, um, specifications. Uh, there were a few conditions that it get reviewed and approved by the, uh, fire department and that they would conform to all the conditions they presented in their application. Then the, um, the commission also approved the reports of officers or the, the annual report from the planning commission to the city council. And that is attached, I think, in the last page of your packet. And you can look at it if you like or, um, ask many questions if you have any, uh, permits were down. I think that's partly because the whole entire industry was down for a while. We did have some public hearings and, uh, did some ordinance amendments. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Hey, Cindy, this is Garn. Uh, I, so is this, this is for the 2020 calendar year, right? Not 2019?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is the right, yeah, this, uh, it was correct multiple times and, or Aaron had trouble keeping up with how many corrections I was making. But, uh, that's what happens when you use last year's template for this year's report.
Got it. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Harbor Authority, Ken, you have anything to share with us this evening?
Uh, no, Mayor, the Harbor Authority did not, did not meet this month.
All right, thank you. Uh, we already heard from, uh, uh, Dan Fox from the Fire Board, uh, Tree Board. I understand that, uh, Scott maybe? Did I hear Scott's name mentioned from?
I'm gonna do that report for Scott because he had to, he has to get up at three o'clock in the morning. So he's already in bed or still flowing in the morning.
All right.
The Tree Board did meet and they approved the removal of 12 trees. The main one of importance would be the one, uh, a big oak tree on Lake Street by Old Pike cottages at 8:45. The target date to do that is February 10. It is a moving target because they have to coordinate with consumers' power to take down a, a line to be safe. The whole entire street will be closed while they're taking that tree down. It's a rather fragile tree and they're, because it's so rotten inside. They're going to be using a crane to take it down. So there will be a complete detour that you don't, that the street will be closed. Um, people that live there will not be losing their power. Consumers is in charge of that. But the coordination between the weather and consumers' power does make it kind of a moving target. They also have, uh, one major tree pruning that they're planning on and that is. 306 Mary Street and a lot of other small trees they're going to be pruning. And that's the extent of that report. Unless you have any questions?
Okay. Any questions for, uh, Cindy relative to the work of the Tree Board? All right. Thanks. Uh, go ahead.
Can I, can I jump in?
You bet.
A non-motorized, uh, trail met last Friday and, uh, Friends of the Blue Star gave us a, a presentation of the whole trail, um, as it goes, uh, what, the parts that we're working on now as they go through the three communities. Um, and Erin, that is on the website for people to see, yes?
That is correct.
Okay. So that was great. It sort of, um, allowed us to see what we were talking about. It looked, it, uh, there are two bridge designs in particular in Sagatuck that we're looking at, a two-lane and a three-lane. And I would just encourage anyone to, uh, visit, uh, our, the city website and, uh, look at that. And this Friday, we have, um, Julie Clark from, uh, Traverse area, uh, rec. Um, she's, uh, the trail person for Traverse City and she's gonna come and talk to us about the experience, experiences they have had building a trail, maintaining a trail and some of the economic effects. So that should be very interesting.
Okay. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Holly.
Next will be report from Council Lake, uh, Soren Water. Uh, our board has met twice in the last, uh, two weeks, uh, well, actually last week. Uh, our regular board meeting was held on Monday, January 18th. We basically add just our normal updates on such things as operations, uh, staffing levels, as we have a couple vacancies. Uh, we have actually, uh, some interviews going on this week. Uh, and also a, uh, budget workshop, uh, for the Cal Lakes, uh, fiscal year 2022 budget. Uh, Cal Lakes, um, budget year runs March through February. Uh, so it's a little different than most of the governmental units in our area, which have a July to July budget year. In between the meetings, uh, Almazoo, uh, Lake Soren Water Authority received a notice from, uh, Eagle, uh, relative to, uh, results of PFAS testing in our, uh, municipal well system. And we had. And we had discovered as a result of that test, which was in late February, trace elements of PFAS in the Douglas wells, which are at the foot of, I think they call them nanograms per liter. All that results from this is that instead of an annual testing at that particular site, it needs to be done every quarter. So we'll just have to adjust our testing just for that one particular well site. And actually, there's two wells at that site, but there's only one tap that's inside the iron removal plant at that location. To compare, the 2.8 is that the maximum contaminant level for that particular toxin is 420 parts per trillion. So it's, is it a concern? Yes. Is it? Anytime you have a, you know, something like that, it's a concern, but it's being monitored. We also ran into this at that well site a few years back, so it's being monitored. And, uh, our staff is on top of the Cal Lake. Today, we had our, another Cal Lake meeting, which was our, our fiscal year 2022 budget hearing and our rate hearing. Again, we need to do this just like the city does with a formal, a budget hearing and, uh, and rate hearing. So, uh, the, we start this off by the city manager giving us an overview of our planned budget and that he presents for approval or revisions by the board. Today, Cal Lake approved the 2022 fiscal year budget based on combined sewer water revenues of 2.3 million dollars in combined revenues and combined expenses of just short of 2.5 million dollars. As with a lot of budgets, you, you budget your revenue low and your expenses high. In the event that our expenses exceed our revenue, Cal Lake has plenty of money to, to address that, that possible situation. Including highlights of the budget this year is just short of $1 million in, in capital repairs, replacement and equipment purchases. Including in that is about seven, $600,000 in upgrades to the backup generator systems. Some of these are permanent generators. For instance, at our lift station one, which is by the mill, Peterson Mill on Holland Street, that, that is the original generator. Well, I can't say it's original. It's, it's 20 plus years old. And so that generator is being, being replaced a little more expensive than going to Generac and getting a home generator for your home. This one's tabbed out at $230,000. We'll also be placing a new generator at the Clearbrook Lift Station, which is down along Goshorn Creek. That is going to be a new addition to our, our system. In addition, we'll also be looking at budgeting $275,000 of repairs and improvements to our, our water system. And that would be a, a new generating system, backup generating system at the township wells, which were by Riverside Cemetery. So those are the highlights of our, we'll also be purchasing a new, a new backhoe. Again, the backhoe we have is probably pushing 30 years old. And two new pickups trucks as we do our fleet revolving replacement. The trucks we'll be replacing are six years old. And these have been funded through the years through our, our motor pool. Second part of our budget, and excuse me for being a little lengthy on this, is where we set our rates for the upcoming year. There was no rate adjust increases for fiscal year 2021. However, we're going to, we approved very, very slight increases for our 2022 year, 2022 fiscal year on the water side of our base fees and our water usage fees. Our water usage fee will increase 5% and our base water fee will increase 4%. Now, it depends on whether you have a residential tap or meter, which most of our, our users have as a residential meter size. But there's meter sizes that run all the way up to six inches. Residential meter sizes based on a 5/8 sewer or water line to the, to the home. So overall, we're looking at very modest increases. I will be sending out an overview of these base rates and fees to the city manager to send out to the board members. It, it was just completed late this afternoon and I haven't had a chance to even read through it. It was, it was just a summary up by our manager, kind of encapsulating what he shared with the board through our, through our process. So that, any questions that you might have regarding any of this from Cal Lake? It's our, like I said, it's when we set the budget and set the rates and so on and so forth. But if none, I'll open up to council comments.
Mayor.
Got it.
Two items. I'll, I'll, I'll start with a constituent concern. I was contacted this evening by one of the residents at the corner of water and Lucy Street where the pumping equipment is. I know there was a plan to put in a new fencing structure around the pumping equipment. I was under the impression that we were going to try to have a sit down or at least make sure the residents there were not surprised by the plans. I think they were surprised. They're not happy about the metal fence posts being cemented into the roadway. I think their desire was something that was more temporary in nature. I went down there and we actually have cemented in posts, at least two posts into the roadway around the, um, the drain. And, you know, the constituent, you know, is, is asking if this is really necessary, given that the water levels are down something like 17 or 19 inches and we've got a pretty optimistic forecast from the Army Corps of Engineers and NOAA. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way where staff can get together with the residents at that corner and, and try to find a solution that's more to everyone's liking because, as I said, I went down there and those metal posts for the fencing certainly appear to be permanent rather than the, like a socket that you, you could pull in, pull in the fence posts in and out and then deploy or undeploy the, uh, the pumping equipment, you know, as the circumstances dictate. Do you relay that constituent concern? Karen has a response. No, Karen, go ahead. Go ahead.
The reason why those posts are in, are being cemented in is because when we take the, the pumping equipment all out, see, that whole thing has to be repaired anyway. So it, it's no issue to repair those posts at the same time because that's such a big area that's going to have to be cut out and repaired. So yes, it, it does look more permanent. It is sturdier, but it's just as temporary as the pumping stuff is because it all has to be repaired. The whole street has to be repaired when that comes out.
Yeah, Karen, I, I, I thought some of that was snowplow related too, right? We needed some kind of a structure that wasn't, you know, because when the snowplows come through the other, anything less than that, they'll be wiped out.
Partly, and the concrete goes a long way with, for the, the snowplows. The fencing was mainly to make it more aesthetically pleasing as long as that pumping equipment has to be there.
I, I think it would be useful if, if staff could actually have a sit down with the residents that are affected by this in the roadway. I, I, I think there's, there seems to be a disconnect in terms of the long-term plan for that pumping apparatus. Obviously, you know, you've got a lot in your plate and you're, you're, you're wrapping up this, this assignment with us. But I, I think it might be good for Scott and Ryan to, to meet with the residents so they understand what the long-term plan is for that, because I, I think we keep having a situation where there, there's, there's a disconnect in terms of understanding over this, this infrastructure.
I think the disconnect is the person wants to do it a different way.
Okay, all right. So that's my, that's the feedback I'm hearing from, from, from a constituent. On another note, Karen, I just want to thank you for all you've done for the city. You know, for someone to take a short-term assignment like this and put so much professionalism and so much passion into it, all I can say is thank you and I'm going to miss you and I, and I hope to see you around Sagittuck in the future. And finally, Ryan, I hope you brought your shovel.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Kenny, have anything to, for us this evening?
Just to pile on Scott's remarks, complimenting Karen, it's been a pleasure to have you here and the, all, all the best for you in the future. And having said that, Ryan, we're looking forward to having you join in with us. Thanks.
I'll be here every summer. You'll just recognize me next time.
Okay.
All right, all right. Holly?
Yeah, I just want to wish Karen well and I look, I look forward to seeing her biking and kayaking around town. And, and thank you and very excited for Ryan to start and that you all will be working together. I also wanted to suggest that we look into doing, having a conversation about the social district at a workshop, and that's based on a law that Whitmer signed in July that allows a local government to designate a social district within our city. And it allows alcohol on licensed premises. And then folks can consume alcohol within the commons of the area. And I think we should look at it for shoulder seasons. So I'm hoping that we can look at that at a workshop. And some of the cities that have that, Toscany, Cadillac, Northville, Port Huron, Allegan, Grand Rapids, that's it.
Yeah, thank you. Lauren, anything?
Um, the only thing I'll add, obviously, thank you to Karen. Appreciate you so much and welcome to Ryan. And I did want to let you guys know that I'll be speaking at the Rotary Club meeting this Wednesday at noon. So any of you Rotarians that want to listen in on that, I've been asked to be the guest speaker just looking at the future of Sagittuck. So should be interesting.
All right, thank you. Garnet?
Yeah, real quick, we had a recycling committee meeting on the 13th. It went very well when we have formulated our plans and our goals for 2021. I'll get those into minute format, if you will, and share them with each of the municipalities. So you have an idea of what the committee's up to. We actually had everybody return from last year, if you will, and saying they were still interested in being on it. So I didn't run them all off. And, and we developed actually some subcommittees. So we have several little working groups within our larger committee, getting ready to put together some things. So it's, I'll, I'll present that back probably at the next workshop, if you don't mind. Along the lines of what Holly said, I have been in conversation with several of the business owners downtown and they're looking forward to hearing something rather soon about the pop-up patios. Hopefully, many of them are hopeful that those will be continued, that that was so very popular and helpful for them. So I think that's, that's worth a discussion pretty quick. And then, yeah, I'll just, I'll pile on for the love for Karen. Thank you so much. I really appreciated you being there. And we'll see you around.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, that wraps up our council meeting for this evening. I'd like to thank everybody for attending. Stay safe. Have a nice evening. Oh, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Garnet?
So moved.
Second, so a motion by Lewis, seconded by Truster to adjourn the meeting. Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken.
Yes, thank you. Meeting adjourned at 8:27 PM. Everybody have a safe and enjoyable evening. Thank you.
All right.